Good evening, everyone in the audience. Good evening, board members. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Roseau Park Board of Education July 19, 2022 meeting. This meeting is held in the Roseau Park High School Auditorium. It is an open session of the Roseau Park Board of Education held under the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, local source, the Home News Tribune, the Borough Clerk, school offices, and the district website. Roll call, please.
President Harms?
Here.
Vice President Corstom? Paul Bimonte? Mark Fernandez?
Here.
Z Infante? Dr. Curtin?
Here.
Jennifer McCarr? Constance Quincella?
Here.
Michael Ann Rigan?
Here.
We have a forum. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
Okay, let it be resolved that the Roseau Park Board of Education meeting hereby convenes the executive session for the discussion of the following subjects: attorney-client privilege and personnel. It is anticipated that the executive session will take approximately 60 minutes. The board may take action during public session. The board shall return to public session following an executive session at approximately 7:00 P.M. The minutes of the executive session shall be released to the public when the reason for an executive session no longer exists. Do you have a motion to go on? Yes, executive.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive. Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion to go back in the open? Can I have a motion to go back in the open?
Second.
Don't pay attention. Who's second?
I can't.
Okay, let's start all over. Let's get this all together. Can I have a motion to go in the open?
Ken.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Now, that's how we do it, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. At this time, we will go into the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak, agenda items only, please come forward to the mic, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to say what you want to say.
Cindy Mago, 433 Walnut Street. I wanted to talk about the curriculum first reading that's on here. There was no curriculum up there, so I'm just curious how we do a first reading without the actual curriculum.
The curriculum is never shared with the public until it is approved by the board. However, there's going to be some forms of the curriculum on the website after the meeting. Mr. Savels, you're the directors, correct?
Well.
That'll be part of the presentation, Miss Mago, just so you know. So it'll be all there.
But then again, at the end, we have another public participation.
Come back and talk then. Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. At this time, we will... There is no principals report?
Nope.
Okay, we will move on to committee reports? Any committee reports? Been a quiet month. Superintendent's report, Mr. Carrito.
Yes, Mr. Harms, I do have a report here this evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education. Actually, tonight, we have a treat. You know, you hear me give my superintendent's report. I typically receive information from the people that you're going to hear tonight. Our directors. We have three directors here. Director of Instruction and Programs, Mr. Savels, which will be first to report on or update on the curriculum, in particularly the health and phys ed curriculum. We have Ms. Bodick, here, Director of Guidance, Director of Counseling. She's going to give an update on some of the programs that we've had this year, and actually, some of the programs that are prepared for next year to assist our students who are still struggling post-pandemic and what we're going to offer in terms of social-emotional learning as well as mental health. And then we have Christine Cleffy, our Director of Special Services here. We'll touch on a few things that are going on in our special ed department and some plans for next year as well. So at this time, I want to call up Mr. Savels to make his presentation, but prior to do that, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Savels and thank quite a number of staff members who have been part of curriculum writing every year, and particularly this year, especially without health and phys ed. And one of the things that I have been making comments on here is we will always be responsible, we will always make sure that the curriculum that we introduce will be age-appropriate, and we want to make sure that we are transparent as well. And two big things that I'm going to emphasize here. Parents will have options. That's never going to go away. We added when we presented the Family Life Curriculum eight years ago, 2014, that was updated, and will continue to be that way as well. In addition to that, we're going to also invite parent input. Our resources are very age-appropriate and very responsible. With that, Mr. Savels, I'm going to ask you to come up, please, and present on curriculum. Yep. Board, there are some slides if you want to go to the front of the auditorium.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Carrito, and those in attendance tonight. My name is James Savo, the Director of Curriculum for the school district. Tonight, I will outline Roseau Park School District's process to implement the remainder of the comprehensive health and physical education standards in our curriculum. The CHP standards were adopted by the state of New Jersey in June of 2020. In summary, you'll see that our implementation plan has and continues to focus on three priorities. Priority one, parental and community input. Two, parental choice to opt out. And three, age-appropriate instruction. In tonight's brief presentation, I will also highlight the timeline from tonight's initial presentation of the curriculum to the board for the first reading to the approval on August 30th, the second reading for implementation in September. Before I begin, I do want to thank the board curriculum committee members, administration, district PE and health teachers, nurses, counselors, and others for your time, work, and input to get to this point. We are very proud of our educators for fostering engaging, age-appropriate instructional experiences for students across content areas, including health and PE. One resource we've used for many years to support classroom instruction is Brain Pop, an age-appropriate resource our teachers use to facilitate conversation and support instruction in and outside of the classroom. I think many parents have had Brain Pop videos to be part of their home life. Brain Pop resources will continue to be utilized as a component of our K through 5 and 8th grade health and PE courses. We continue to prioritize our supportive parental requests to opt out of family life classroom lessons. In grades 5 and 8, the process has been updated for the coming school year to provide additional clarity as to specific content of lessons in the family life portion of health and PE content. The process will remain the same in K through 4 and in high school. Again, in grades 5 and 8, additional steps have been developed to provide clarity about how the CHP standards will be addressed in specific lessons in grade 5 and grade 8. The standards are grouped by grade span, providing flexibility for districts to cluster learning experiences to match the needs of the community. We've identified and clustered performance expectations related to what is known in Roseau Park as a family life curriculum to be addressed in 4th, 5th, and 8th grade. You'll see that we will continue to notify parents in advance of family life lessons containing sensitive content. New for this coming school year, the 22-23 school year, we'll use Google Forms that identify specific performance expectations to be addressed in small group or individually by parent request. A sample letter is linked to this presentation, which will be available tomorrow on the district website. We are preparing documents and resources to help parents make informed decisions about their child's participation in family life lessons. These documents are: the performance expectations mapped by grade spans, that's K 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9 through 12; all K through 12 PE and health curriculum units; parental notification letters that will be used in grades 4, 5, and 8; as well as the Google Forms that will be used in grades 5 and 8 for parents to express their desire to have lessons addressed individually in small group; and a handful of lesson samples to show how we're interpreting the standards and specific lesson examples for parents to review. All documents will be posted to the district website the week of August 1st through 5th. The target is August 2nd. The Performance Expectation Alignment Document will provide a roadmap for parents and community to review curriculum units. Curriculum documents are lengthy, and so my hope is this outline will help parents navigate the units that they are interested in reviewing. The performance expectations in the middle column have the exact coding. That's really the specific language of the performance expectations that we're required to cover in content. The column D is the primary educator who will be responsible in what context that they'll be delivered, whether it's a PE teacher, a health teacher, a classroom teacher, or if it's a school-wide content, and the grade level and unit if applicable. These resources will be accessible on the district website under the Curriculum and Instruction tab and by clicking Elementary and Secondary banner. Again, all documents will be posted. August 2nd is the target. The Parental Community Input Form will be open and accessible tomorrow and will remain open for input feedback through August 16th, so that I can give that feedback to the board and to the administration to review before the second reading of the curriculum on August 3rd. In addition, we're also in the process of scheduling two parent workshops focused on the health and PE standards. One workshop will focus on elementary content, when another focused on middle school content. The purpose of these workshops is to provide resources and support for parents to facilitate discussion about the standards in their home in the way that you feel is appropriate for your family. This can be in support of classroom instruction or in lieu of instruction if you choose to opt out of particular lessons. Additional curriculum units on tonight's agenda for a first reading are noted on this slide. These units will also be available for review on August 2nd. Thank you very much for your attention, support, and I look forward to the next steps in this process as we continue to prepare for the 22-23 school year.
The opt-out means that the parent of the child doesn't want their child to participate in, I guess we said it's 3 and 5th, 3rd, what is it?
4th, 5th, and 8th.
4, 5, and 8. Okay, 4, 5, and 8. So they don't want their child to participate in it. So when they opt out, is this curriculum go towards, and again, I apologize for not having the right terminology or whatever, ask it the way I know it, go towards their grade, you know what I'm saying? If you take gym, if you don't participate in gym, you fail. Okay, so is this have anything to do with the past fail of whatever it might be?
No.
Okay.
So if they opt out. Typically, it's isolated lessons, a lesson here, a lesson there. If parents opt out, typically, they're in alternate location. They come to the office, they go through a different class, but the principals usually handle an alternative setting for the child during the lesson if it's taking place whole class.
Okay, so if a parent opt out, there are different options for that person, for that child to be educated in that particular subject?
Yes. Typically, if someone's opting out of the content, it's objectionable content from there, from whatever standpoint they're requesting to opt out. So typically, they'll have an alternative assignment that they'll do somewhere else in the school, which is usually handled by the nurse, the homeroom teacher, or the principal directly.
Okay. If they opt out, do they have to take it?
No.
So if they opt out, they opt out, and that would be the end of it, nothing, no recourse or no repercussions on opting out or anything of that sort?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Okay. So I know we discussed the opt-in and opt-out, but for things like the opt-in for the parenting, abortion, adoption, gender identity, gender expression, sexual sexual orientation, there's no children in the room, so vaginal, oral, and anal sex, sorry. Those, are we going to use the word that those are opt-in only, like the word opt-in and opt-out are going to be placed on the curriculum? When we voted in, you know what I mean, like it's going to say these are opt-in, these are opt-out for the ones that are opt-out?
I don't necessarily know if it's going to be exactly that, simply because the law states that parents have the ability to opt out of any standard.
Right.
So if I'm in the committee and the curriculum writers are identifying just specific content to opt out, there might be others that someone does want to opt out for whatever reason. We've, I've had many discussions with everyone from the administrative team to nurses, to teachers, to parents. I think we've done a pretty good job of identifying the standards that we are including in the letters and in the Google Forms so that parents have the ability to opt out. But do I know that we've hit exactly every standard that someone might not want their child to participate in? I don't know.
But are we, we're specifying there's an opt-in and an opt-out, that there's different things that are opt-in and opt-out? We're using the words opt-in and opt-out in the curriculum?
Not in the curriculum, but in the letters to spell out the curriculum, yes. Like for a letter that I think everyone's familiar with, the 4th grade lesson, the puberty lesson.
Right.
That is the template that we used for the 5th grade lesson. There's a little bit additional information, specifically what performance expectations are related to the content that's in the lesson. So the letter will have a description of the lesson and the content to be covered, and then a list of the performance expectations that are not part of the lesson. Those performance expectations will be named on the letter in code only so that the letter is not specifying the language that is in question. The parent will have the ability to then click to the Google form, and at which point they can go standard by standard if they want that to be addressed at school, or if it's not being addressed in school, it'll be left alone. But the content of the lesson will be described very specifically as to what is covered in the content, and then there are the performance expectations listed that maybe go beyond the scope of the lesson.
Okay. John, maybe this is a question for you. So if we pass the curriculum without it specifying opt-in, opt-out on what we pass, is... So I think what your question is, and I think what Mr. Savo is trying to explain, is that parents have the ability legally to opt out, really, is what the law provides for, is an option to opt out, okay, of anything that meets the standard, you know, under that. So basically, like you have a religious or conscientious, you know, issue, for lack of a better way of saying it, with the topic being discussed. The parent or guardian is the person who dictates what the child is going to opt out on, not the district. The district presents the curriculum, and I think what Mr. Savo's point is, is that it could be anything. It could be anything in the curriculum that the parent is able to sort of meet this standard on and say, "I am electing to opt out." So you don't designate what would be able to be opt-in or opt-out. The parent will determine that and, you know, send in a letter essentially, or I'm not sure what he's saying in terms of if you're processing it maybe through Genesis, you know, online, but, you know, some kind of affirmation that they're doing that. Okay. I guess it was more for the opt-ins, because I know we can opt out of everything, but specifying, just in passing the curriculum, because like I said, and I know you worked hard and did a great job, but the opt-in ones obviously are important because those are the controversial topics. So I guess just asking if that was going to be, if we were specifying that those were opt-in topics before we pass it.
As with all curriculum, it's the district's duty to interpret how they write that into the curriculum. There are some areas where our interpretation is leaving certain words or standards out of our instruction, and the opting in is opting in to use those terms explicitly. We, our interpretation of some of the performance expectations is not explicit in using some of the language.
Right.
For those areas of the curriculum where they are listed as standards and our interpretation may or may not be as aggressive as intended, that's our interpretation, but we did not want to make that decision for parents that it's not going to be used. So there are some performance expectations that parents would have to express to opt in if we're going to address them explicitly as stated directly in the performance expectations.
Okay. If they do, so say we have these opt-in lessons, and are the teachers going to be directed not to use the terms in the opt-in language to children that didn't opt in?
Yes, that's why we're doing this, so that if the expectation was that we're using those words explicitly at those grade levels, we are not comfortable doing so, so that parents will need to opt in so that their students will be taught explicitly, word for word, verbatim, the way that they're listed in the performance expectations.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Savo, we're talking a lot about opt-in, opt-out. So if a guardian or parent says, "I don't want my child to have this one grade 4, don't want to have this one here," so they opt out, right? During a classroom of 25, what four other students opt out? What happens with the four students compared to the other 21 students? So where do the four students, "I opt out," okay? They opt out, they opt out, they opt out. So we have four children out of 25 in grade 4 that's supposed to have this curriculum. The day that comes that this curriculum is being taught, because I understand it's one time?
Just one lesson.
One lesson, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're not present for the lesson, it's comparable to...
It's not being present. They come to school, and they opted out. They're sitting in a classroom, and it's time for this curriculum because it's not a, is it a full-day curriculum?
No.
It's a period. Okay. So at this time, 9:00 in the morning, there's four children in that 20, in the classroom of 25 that opted out not to have this particular curriculum taught to them. What happens to them, four students?
I can't say exactly what would happen in every context. It's the building principal decides how to handle that, but I can provide some examples. Sometimes, in the past, I know that when I was Principal Robert Gordon School, some of those students opted out, came to the office and had an alternative assignment to do in the main office. Teachers who are on prep and don't have instructional duties at that time might have the students in an open classroom for a lesson. They might go to the nurse's office. And it's really, really discretion of the principal as to who's available and what's available for instruction for the students who are opting out of a lesson.
And I think, and I guess the point I'm trying to make is for some people in the audience that might have somebody ask them this opt-out thing. I guess if I was sitting there and one of the four children, and I had to get up and leave the classroom to a 4th grader, I don't know. So I guess where I'm going, I don't know how the person, the child will feel at being in 4th grade, being asked to leave the classroom at that particular period for that subject. So I don't want the parents to get all upset because their child is asked to leave the classroom because they opt out. That's where I guess I'm going.
No, and I'm, if I may answer this. Students are moving around most of the day. Some students get pulled out for, you know, tied up basic skills instruction. Some students get pulled out for different things. They used to be move around, but I know the principals, especially at the elementary level, because I know what they're doing, they do a really good plan where students don't feel uncomfortable moving from one place. It's already, yeah, it's already strategically done, so the students don't really feel uncomfortable, but Mr. Savo, I don't know if you...
And I appreciate that. Not having a grandchild or a child in 4th grade, I wouldn't know how that would handle it. One last question that I have anyhow, the form we talked about. And it seems in the past that we have parents come forward and say they never got the form, they didn't have this, they didn't have that. How can the board or the district supply the board with some kind of, I'm going to use the word for lack of another one, guarantee that all parents will get the form to fill out, because, you know, we hear they don't have a computer, they don't know how to get on this, they don't know how to do that, they don't know how to do this, they don't know how to do that, and I can understand it. Okay? But again, I don't want to have somebody come forward and talk about their child was, was, their parent didn't want the child to have this particular subject, and they're sitting in the classroom and they're all upset with what the subject matter was. I need, for the board, I think, I'll speak for the board, and if I'm wrong, please speak up, that we have to have some kind of insurance that all parents are going to get this form to fill out, to opt in, opt out, cross the street, you know, climb the building, whatever. How are we going to ensure that?
I think it's like, Lauren, is it multiple ways of communication to the parents that they are aware of something that's happening like four months from now down the line, something like that, just so that they are prepared? And, you know, the school is prepared?
We have discussed that, like other instances where there's a heightened awareness of specific information that needs to be sent out, whether it be around school violence, whether it be other events in the world. There are times when we need to make sure that communication is rock-solid, that it's getting home to the parents. I believe this is those instances where we're going to take those extra measures, whether it be through Ed Leo, using paper copies. There are a lot of different ways that principals and teachers are communicating with their families. I think for these lessons, particularly in 4th and 5th, where it's one lesson, a series of lessons in 8th grade, I can assure you that we're going to go a little bit further to make sure that all parents are getting this communication ahead of the lesson, so we don't have any mistakes.
Sorry, James, I just have a question. So if a parent hasn't responded to any communication, are they, is the child going to be taught whatever the controversial information is?
I think my second part to that question is...
If a parent doesn't opt out of instruction, yes, that instruction will take place if it's in the curriculum.
Oh, Mr. Savo, I think my second part to that question is just around timeline, like how far in advance will you ask parents?
A week in advance. Now, I know that all elementary principals, Ms. Goys at the middle school, we've already discussed making sure that there's a little bit of time reserved at parent-teacher conference. I'm at open house back-to-school nights, just to make sure that parents are aware of the timeline of any of the instruction. But typically, notification is at least a week in advance, and I believe at the elementary school, they've notified parents multiple times prior to the lesson.
Yeah, Mrs. Savo, for that question that Ms. McCarr asked, I know that we have also discussed with the Director of Technology regarding having alerts for the classroom teachers when things are sent out for Genesis, so they are alerted that certain parents did not respond, and we may be able to have some kind of, something in place where we can send a second notice, so we can send a paper notice. so, something in place where we can send a second notice, so we can send a paper notice home instead of the digital notice, because that means that there's something going on that they may not, it may not be reaching the parents. So we discussed that with the technology director as well. Now that we have Genesis, we can use it for so many things, uh, for communication purposes. Ed Leo, obviously we have as well. So we can certainly, uh, you know, uh, provide that for them.
These, these are conversations that the principals and I will have to make sure that we're not missing any parent to be notified of these instructional lessons when they're taking place in class.
Okay. Mr. Salvos, thank you for tonight, and thank you for answering the questions.
I just, I have one. Are the opt out, opt in forms in other languages?
Right now they're in draft form, but they will be, they'll be translated to Spanish and then we'll, we'll take it from there if we need additional languages like, as we typically do.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you for that question, Mr. Fernandez. Certainly, uh, we have the ability now to, uh, do translations in any language. Uh, so yes, they'll be going out with the home language that we have. The parents have provided us. So thank you for that.
Uh, question, Mr. Salvos, uh, in terms, and perhaps you've already clarified this, but just to, for my slow brain sometimes. Is this the protocol that has been to this point in terms of notification? Is this how it has always been to this point with these lesson plans?
Yes, yes. We've always notified parents of sensitive content in lessons related to family life. From the first implementation, for as long as I've been in district, we've been notifying parents in advance of family life lessons through eighth grade.
So with these new quote unquote controversial issues, it's, we're giving the same amount of time that they would have for any other issue that has been presented in the past. Correct?
I'm not sure I understand that.
To clarify, so with certain standards, new standards that are, that have been added to the curriculum, is there the, the same protocol a week in advance notification that is being presented to our parents?
No, it's really for family life and related instances. This is the only area of curriculum where there's law mandating that parents have the ability to opt out. All other curriculum is mandated and there is no option to opt out. With the legislation that parents do have the right related to the comprehensive health and PE, we did go the extra mile to make sure that all of the standards, including the movement, lifelong fitness goals, all of those are mapped so that if a parent chooses to opt out of offensive and defensive strategy, that's legal because it's part of the comprehensive health and PE. It's not just family life. It's not a standalone set of standards. So we do have all of the health and PE standards mapped. So parents have that option as the law states.
And then I, I believe I have a question for Jennifer in regard to this curriculum. If the board were to not approve this curriculum, are we at liberty to speak in public about what the consequences would be?
Yeah. Right. So, okay. I, I think I understand your question. The curriculum is mandated by the state. So if the board does not approve the curriculum, it's subject to a variety of possibilities. I mean, it would include, well, you're, you're in violation of what you're required to do, right? So that can come back to be a problem in CUSAC. That could potentially come back to be a problem with respect to notifications essentially down to Trenton to say that, you know, the, this board is not, you know, following that. And then there's a series of repercussions that come from that. I can't say what those specific repercussions would be, but you would be in violation of that requirement. Yes.
Thank you.
Jen, would you be able, because I believe there's 13 districts. I know we did pass, well, before most of us were on the board, that we accepted the state curriculum in 2020, correct? The board at the time did. I believe it's up to 13 boards now in New Jersey that decided not to follow the state. I, I was wondering exactly if maybe you could look more into what the penalties would be if we opted not to, for us specifically, for Roselle Park.
Yeah, I, I know there've been funding penalties as well, where they could cut funding to programs, funding to, you know, classroom. That can affect personnel and, and class sizes. So I'm deeply concerned about that. I, I really am. I, and again, I, I think Roselle Park has done an incredible job and Mrs. Salvos and, and the staff members have contributed to, to make sure that it's a responsible curriculum and, and that the parents, which, you know, I know, uh, you know, a lot of concern, they do have the option, whether they want the child to be taught something or not, uh, and so forth. You know, I, I really, you know, I've, I've sat in meetings and so forth, and I think we've done a really good job, much better than most of the districts in the state. I, I really believe that, uh, from the bottom of my heart, I, I do. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about, uh, any penalty from the state. Because in, in the history of, uh, district not following certain state standards or requirements or mandates, what have you, they have been penalized. They have. And you know, this is not the first time that this has, has come up. So, Mrs. Salvos.
Just to add, when the comfort, when the health standards were approved in 2014, there were some items that were deemed questionable and a lot of discussion and, and input. And from implementation forward, we've provided parents the ability to opt out many years before the legislation demanded that we provide that option to parents, because we did understand that for, for a variety of reasons, some parents might not want to have these, this information presented in school. Now that there's legislation, we're formalizing and went a little bit further, but we've always provided that opt, opt out courtesy to parents. Now it's mandated by law. But I do think that just as we did in 2014, that we've done a great job of interpreting the standards in ways that work for the community of Roselle Park. And for those that feel that the interpretation is a little bit beyond their comfort, for whatever reason may be, that we're still listening to that input, to that feedback and, you know, that, that, that we want to make sure that this is done well. I don't think there was much controversy following 2014. And I'm expecting that we're going to have a smooth implementation in September with, with the, with the identification of these standards and performance expectations, which I, I think through conversation with those that are teaching it, or those school-wide experiences that touch on many of them, many of the expectations, I think we're in a very good position to move forward to implement these standards in a way that works for Roselle Park.
I just have a question for Jennifer. Have, have you actually seen any, uh, I guess districts that have had penalties taken, like with, what happened with the penalties? Like, have they had anything taken away from them?
I have not, currently, I am not aware of any school district that my office represents that has not supported the curriculum and been put in that position. So I cannot speak personally with respect to a district being penalized. I can say, I, I, I have the question down that, that Ms. Quintella asked earlier in terms of, you know, looking into further to see if I can find any specifics with respect to what that penalty will be. Um, and I can certainly update the board in the future on that. What I will say is that Mr. Corredo is definitely correct in saying that in general, when state mandates are not followed by boards of education, that typically results in some kind of a financial penalty to the board with some kind of impact to state funding. So I mean, I can say that as a global statement, but I can't give a specific example of whether or not that's been attached in this case. Even after looking into this, I don't know that I'll be able to tell you that up to this point in time, because there, there's not a whole lot of time in terms of that implementation.
And if I may add, these standards are required to be implemented by September of 2022. So this, nothing has happened yet. So we haven't had school yet in the 2022 school year. So we can't be out of compliance or in compliance until the school year begins.
I meant like more like in the past where we have adopted some sort of controversial or whatever you want to call it curriculum. Has there any, has there actually been any penalties to districts that haven't taught that, that portion of it?
I'm, not that I'm aware of.
Mr. McCarr.
So it's more directed to Jen, but.
But, but I don't, I don't think that the school di- district has ever been in a position of not following the curriculum. So that would be a hard question to ask if we haven't been in that position. We try to stay in, in it. And again, I, I, I think, uh, finding out if there is or what possibilities our penalties would be, um, is a good, um, stepping point to find, you know, to see what it is. But other than that, it, it's kind of hard as, as he, Mr. Salvos, Mr. Salvos said, we haven't started school yet. So we're, we're in compliance right now because we haven't started school. So, um, it's going to be a little hard to do.
And to Mr. Harms' point, as well as Mr. Salvos', my interpretation of Ms. Quintella's question is possible penalties. Because as Mr. Salvos points out, there are no actual penalties up to this point, because we have not yet reached that timeline.
Right. So am I correct in saying in, in layman's terms that if we choose not to approve this curriculum as a board, that there will, there is a potential hypothetical consequences to fu- to funding and to staffing that could affect our students?
Yes.
Yes. And the, the only thing that I would add to that.
We don't know.
Is that, um, the state has definitely sort of made a broad statement to say that the curriculum is mandated and that there will be consequences if it is not adopted. Again, sitting here tonight, I can't tell you what those specific consequences are. You're correct in saying potential, but I, I just want to lay out there that they have made that statement.
At, at this time, I appreciate the, the discussion we've had with you. I think it's been, uh, great. But I, I think it's time now to, to kind of move on to our other presentations, because I think we could spend a lot of time with this thing here. But again, if anybody has any questions out there, please call the superintendent's office. Um, and let's hear your, your questions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Salvos.
Salvos, thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to call up now our Director of Guidance, Colleen Bodek. I hate to take, you know, the, take as much time as you want, really, to, uh, Mrs. Salvos took as much time for guidance, Ms. Bodek.
He took your time, the next person's time, and the next time too. But he ain't going to get it next time. No.
No, that's fine. I'll just give a brief overview of, um, our, our multi-tiered system of support for mental health, for addressing mental health concerns in the district. Um, again, I'm Colleen Bodek, the Director of Guidance and Testing for the school district. Thank you all for hearing me out tonight. So our multi-tiered system of support includes three tiers. Our first tier of support is universal supports that are available to all of our students, depending on class, grade level, et cetera. So these include classroom lessons by school counselors. At the elementary level, that includes morning meetings for social, emotional learning and development, access to school counseling services, district-wide theme week activities such as Start With Hello Week, Red Ribbon Week, School Violence Prevention Week, Celebration Week, and many more. Additionally, training and professional development will increase our staff's capacity to prevent and respond to mental health concerns. An example of one of these tier one interventions, this happens every school year, our, um, school social worker at the high school and one of the counselors go into all of the health lessons. I'm sorry, all of the health classes for freshmen and provide a suicide prevention lesson. During that lesson, they distribute, um, crisis intervention phone numbers to local crisis hotline and the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. This year they'll be distributing the new 988 crisis hotline number, kind of like the 911 for, um, mental health emergencies moving forward. So that has been very helpful. Um, in the past, students have told us that they've used those phone numbers for help. Um, and that's something we will continue to do. Our second tier of support will include small group and individual, um, counseling services. Some of these groups include social skills groups, referrals to the crisis center at the high school level, counselor check-ins at the middle and elementary level lunch bunches, um, as well as intern run groups. And our final third tier of support for the students in greatest need will include outside referrals for counseling and applicable treatment and support. One service that's now going to be available to our students in this tier three is gaggle therapy, which is a platform for virtual counseling that will be available to our students to more quickly connect to services. Sometimes there's a, a waiting list for therapy outside services, or there's issues with insurance and, um, we'll have a referral process through the school counselors to connect students quickly to services. And lastly, we will await the state's guidance. A year or so ago, they, um, put into law the requirement of assessing students in grades seven through 12, mental health assessment. So that's something that we are going to wait on their guidance for, um, and welcome with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bodek, for that report. We really appreciate it.
Any, any questions from the board? Just, just in case.
Okay. And last but not least, I would like to call up Ms. Christine Cleffy, our Director of Special Services. Cleffy?
Good evening, President Harms, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Corredo, and members of the community. My name is Chris Cleffy and I'm the Director of Special Services. It's pretty hard for me to believe as I stand here tonight, that it's already been 11 months since my initial appointment to the Director of Special Services here in, in Roselle Park. Over the past 11 months, I've truly been honored to work with the members of our community to get to know our students. Every day I continue to be amazed, not surprised, but just amazed in how obvious it is that all members of the community, um, that everybody really embodies what it means to be community here. For the folks that, um, many of our staff members and our community members born and raised here and have stayed here, and I can certainly in the past 11 months see why that is. So first, what I'd like to focus on is just a brief update. As all of you may or may not be aware, through special education code, we are required to have a special ed parent advisory group, otherwise known as CPAG. So I will say that, um, really since starting in the district, I think within my first week or two, I connected with four parents who have stepped forth to be, uh, my co-leaders for the year. We are continuing into next year with, um, our co-leader group. And we always welcome anyone else that would like to be a part of our leadership of looking to identify not only our meeting dates, but our topics. My four co-leaders have been amazing because they have been that conduit to the community and me. And we've really worked this year on, um, having some honest and, and good conversations and sometimes difficult conversations about systemic needs that need to be addressed in the district. And I think all things that we have worked through this year. We have celebrated with parents. We've had parents in every month for meetings. And, um, we've again focused on their student successes. And also we've listened and I've heard folks concerned. I've met with folks individually. We've met through CPAG and we've met in small groups to, um, to talk about the needs of, of our students within the special ed department. That also includes, I have to also just say, um, also includes students with 504 plans. Our parents are also welcomed to join our meetings and participate as well. And all mailings that go out regarding our meeting dates do include all students who have IEPs in the district, whether it's through special education and related services, whether it's students who only have speech-only IEPs or students that have 504s. So we do those mailings monthly with updates to our meetings. I do have the meeting dates for the school year that we've already established for 22, 23. And these meeting dates will also be included on the district calendar as well. So what I wanted to highlight, as I said, we did meet monthly. Again, providing parents with opportunities for feedback and involvement in varying issues across the district. In addition to our monthly meetings, what has, has really been, for me, a true success is we're working on inclusion efforts and really working with our students on opportunities to be, uh, provided with an outlet for social interactions with other students in the district. So this year we were fortunate to, um, sponsor three student-centered activities. One fall, one spring, and then one end of year activity, which we met at the Century Playground. one fall, one spring, and then one end-of-year activity, which we met at the Century Playground. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge tonight Mr. Rineiri and his staff at the Signorallo Center because two of our events, our fall and our spring event, were held at the Signorallo Center. We were welcomed with open arms. Mr. Rineiri and his staff were, sat down with myself and our co-leaders to plan these events and really design those events around the needs of our students. And I will tell you that we, the first, first get-together, we had some folks show up. The second get-together was approaching and I usually do for those things an RSVP list is probably like a week or two before and the list was looking, you know, a little on the low side. And I said to Mr. Rineiri, you know, I'm sorry, I was hoping we were gonna have more and, and he said to me, Chris, he said, we're gonna go with the if you build it, they will come. We're going to keep coming back and keep doing this. And I have to say, for our spring event, we've had over 50 families with us. We had a packed house at the Signorallo Center for a Saturday afternoon and it's been really nice to see parents connect with families that they perhaps may not otherwise connect with and are now a resource for each other navigating through special education. In addition to Mr. Rineiri, I just also have to acknowledge that Officer Diaz with the Roselle Park Police Department has been attending our outside-of-school get-togethers, again, whether it's on a Saturday, it's at night, and also just supporting our families and problem-solving through safety concerns that they have for their students. So she has been an invaluable resource to me and to our families in the community as well. As we head into 2022-23, I do definitely encourage any community member, regardless of whether your student has an IEP, a 504, to attend our meetings. They are open to anyone. At the crux of any CPAG group is our parents and that, when I say parents, that is open to any community member that has an invested interest in supporting our department and supporting the needs of our students. Let me talk a little bit about this summer. As soon as the school year ended and as the school year was ending, and, and this really continues, even though our elementary principals are, are not working, so to speak, in the summer, but they are working, I continue to collaborate with the principals across all levels on staffing needs, professional development needs for the 2022-23 school year and just ways in which that we can grow as a department. I will tell you that on a weekly basis, I am either in someone's office, we're talking on the phone, we are, I'm talking on my way into work with the principals, just I have this idea, let's do this. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful experience for me to get the support of all the administrators in the district and welcoming students into our programs. We are, as you know, from prior Board of Ed meeting, we did agree to open and have approval from the county to open up a new language and learning disabilities class at Sherman. We are welcoming with tonight's board approval a replacement speech therapist. We have the addition of a special ed teacher that we are now able to do some more additional focus outside the context of what our special ed teachers are already doing on a day-to-day basis. But we've also had that opportunity to really focus on reading across the district and supports that we need in that area as well. And then also with July quickly coming to an end, I also just wanted to acknowledge our families who have students that are attending our extended school year program. It's, you know, we know for some, just getting students out of the house every day is, is a task. I'm a mom, I know it's not always fun, but we have over 60 families showing up every day to our extended school year program. I also just wanted to acknowledge our staff that are there every day. I think we have had perfect attendance, knock on wood, with our staff showing up every day to our summer programs and not only supporting our students, but really making each day meaningful in academic activities, social, emotional activities, and, you know, supporting whatever the needs are day-to-day. And everybody has been all hands on deck every single day, ensuring that our ESY program has been successful. I think that's all the updates that I have, but as we close out ESY, which is next Thursday, the 28th, we are planning to, the kids definitely have earned some downtime and some celebratory. We're going to do ice pops for the, you know, for the afternoon. So I welcome any members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Garrido, love to stop by and see our kiddos in action and, and again, just to see who we support day-to-day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleffy. Thank you so much.
We move on to the agenda under Personnel, Items 1 through 21 and Addenda Items 1 through 4. Item 1, Staff Appointments. 2, Change of Assignments/Transfers. 3, Revision Additional Summer Enrichment Math Literacy Program Staff. 4, Additional Summer 2022 Child Study Team Personnel. 5, Staff Resignation. 6, 2022 Additional ESY Staff. 7, Retirement Compensation 21-22. Resending of Staff Appointments. 9, Home Instruction, Home Instruction Instructors. 10, Additional Summer Credit Recovery Staff. 11, Revision to ARP Learning Acceleration Program Staff. 12, Revision Additional Summer Camp Staff. 13, Additional Curriculum Writing. 14, K-12, K-4 Summer Reading Preparation. 15, Additional Skill-Based ELA Mathematics Support Program Staff. 16, Additional High School Extracurricular Activities. 17, Title I School Plans. 18, Instructional Supports Stipends. 19, Designation of Public Agency Compliance Officer. 20, Approval of Appointment of Custodian Public Records. And 21, Appointment of Qualified Purchasing Agent. Addendum, Addenda Items Under Personnel. 1, Additional High School and Middle School Fall/Winter Coaches 2022-23. 2, Staff Resignation. 3, Salary Adjustment. And number 4, Staff Appointments. Do we have any, I'm sorry, do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Paul DiMonte? Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Jennifer McCarr?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes.
Michael Ann Reagan? President Harms?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to Education, Agenda Items 22 through 32. 22, District Monitoring Plan. 23, Title I Parental Involvement Policies and Parent Compact. 2022-2023, 24 High School and Middle School Athletic Schedules. 25, Additional Trip Requests. 26, Approval of Toilet Room Facilities for Pre-Kindergarten/Kindergarten Classrooms. 27, Additional Education Programs 2022-2023. 28, Conference Attendance Request. 29, Professional Development Plan. 30, 2022-2023 High School Marching Band Schedule. 31, Additional ESY Education Programs for 2022. And 32, Curriculum First Reading. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, for number 26, the approval for the toilet room. Are, how many rooms are getting a bathroom? It's just Sherman and Robert Gordon for the preschool?
Yes, Robert Gordon and Sherman, yes.
Okay. Is it in, do the kindergartens already have one or?
We do have one.
Okay, so just the preschool?
Okay, roll call, please.
Paul DiMonte? Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Jennifer McCarr? Constance Quintella? Michael Ann Reagan? President Harms?
Yes. Motion carries. As we move on, we'll move to Business, Agenda Items 33 through 44 and Addenda 5 and 6. 33, Monthly Certification. 34, Approval of Bills. 35, Approval of Minutes. 36, Secretary Treasurer's Report. 37, 2022-2023 Joint Transportation Agreement. 38, Use of Buildings and Grounds. 39, Budget Transfers. 40, Additional Intern Affiliation Student. 41, Purchase of Paging Assistant. 42, Grant Application Acceptance Physical Year 2023. 43, Closed Unused Accounts. 44, Business Degree Program and Athletic Training Agreement. 45, 45, Roselle Park Technology Policy and Fee Schedule. Addenda Item Under Business, number 5, Memorandum Agreement. And 6, Approval of Bills. Have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Paul DiMonte?
Yes.
Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Jennifer McCarr?
Yes.
Constance Quintella? Michael Ann Reagan? President Harms?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to Continuing Business. Do we have any? Hearing none, new business? I do have one. You know, we have the Committee on Vision 2025. It kind of went to the wayside for a little bit. So what I'd like to do with the approval of the board is make it 2027 Vision and also remove Mr. Mark Fernandez from the committee and add Paul Bamonte to the committee. Any, anybody on the board have any issue? No? So be it. It's done. Thank you. Got it. At this time, we'll move into the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Jennifer McCullough, 415 Filbert Street. So the conversation about opt-out and opt-in, I am a major in marketing and this is where I kind of thrive in my business, business world. So you can't just assume that parents are going to read this and opt out. When COVID hit, there was a mandatory form that had to be filled out, otherwise students were not allowed in the school building. And they had the nurse or the principal standing outside, making sure that every single parent had signed that form. I don't see how difficult it would be on the one day a year that you're teaching this curriculum to have it mandatory so that you ensure that every parent reads exactly what's needed to be read and that they either opt in or out, opt out, whatever your choice of words may be at this point. But make it mandatory so you're not going to upset a parent or student. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. With, with, with that, I just, I thought that's what we were gonna do anyhow, is to make sure, that's what my question was before, on how do we ensure? Well, I, I differ with that. I hate this. But when he said that if somebody didn't opt to, to opt out of it, then that person, that child would be given that course. So I, I don't disagree, we should have it mandated, but I thought that's what we were gonna do in the beginning. Thank you.
Hi, Lucy Figarito, 330 Sheridan Avenue. So you did talk about the opt-out and I agree, I did opt out my daughter. And Mr. Garrido, when I did opt out my daughter, they did put her in the nurse's office. And it didn't matter. She opted out. She came home and asked me if she was weird because only three kids opted out. The whole class told her everything anyway, so it doesn't even matter if you opt out or opt in. Other kids are gonna talk. So I'm just saying, even though I think you should give the parents a heads up and let them, speak to them, regardless if you want or not, let's be realistic, kids talk. So my daughter did find out regardless if I opted her out. So it didn't matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Bago, 433 Walnut. Sorry, I have notes everywhere. I have to turn my paper. So my first question was, will Mr. Salvos' presentation be on the district website? Because I couldn't see it.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Number two. So the, the opt-in, that, that was by Google form. Mr. Salvos had said it would just have the state standard number. And I'm curious if we're not comfortable telling parents very explicitly what is in that state standard. Why would we be comfortable teaching it to the kids? Rather than just having a number, it should say what is going to be included. You can't expect parents to click anything. I feel like that's just opening up another can of worms that, why, why do that, you know? Then you're gonna have a parent say, well, I didn't know. I mean, obviously you gave them the option, but why not just put it there? This is what we're gonna be teaching. Do you want your kid to, to hear about it or not? That was another one. As far as the one-week notice, personally, I don't think that's enough time. The, the middle school, their field trip, they gave us over a month to fill out the field trip form and we're giving one week for something that's far more, you know, important educationally. I think a week just probably isn't enough time, especially with this year changing things so much. That was number three. Hold on, sorry, I'm turning my paper. Also, listening, I, I know that you, there was the discussion of opt-in, opt-out. I would like and hope that the curriculum itself would say these things will be opt-in explicitly on the curriculum so that there's no question later when it gets approved. Hopefully it does get approved and we don't have any problems. But, you know, I, I did speak with Mr. Salvos in the past and he did show me his breakdown of the opt-ins and opt-outs and, and it does look good and it sounds good. I just hope that when it's approved, it's explicit. This is what will be taught, this is what will be opted. So there's no, like, oh, we didn't have time, you know? We, we, we kind of just had to do it all together type of thing. And then my last question is, hopefully I don't run out of time. The, I, I understand that the health part is what we're sending home, a opt-in or opt-out, whatever it may be. Are these things going to be in the other disciplines? I mean, you have, you have a lot of new standards that may be included in social studies, et cetera. Is that going to be any sort of opt-out in that? I mean, there's people that just aren't going to want their kids learning about sexual orientation in social studies class or gender identity. Is there gonna be a way to deal with that?
I'm sorry, you turned it up.
That was the last thing, so I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Edward Guide, 710 Hamilton Place, Roselle Park. President Harms, members. I'm here tonight to say I, I send emails with discrimination complaints to the email of President Harms and vice-
I'm sorry, can you speak right into the mic? Thank you.
Okay. I send a few complaints, discrimination complaints to the mailbox, I mean, the email of President Harms, Vice President Carl Strom. And so far, this is over a few months is ongoing and so far I didn't receive any answer or sign of any processing to my complaints. And I'm here today to urge the board to collect the emails with all the attachment and the evidence it has and process my complaints and establish communication with me or take decisions. These complaints are serious and ongoing for a long time now and need to stop. Need, because we under great pressure and I tried all ways, all peaceful ways, including meeting the superintendent, but no way, never stopped. So please process my complaints, communicate with me, invite me for a hearing if needed and I'm more, more than willing to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Valenti. I am from 315 West Clay Avenue. In regards, and I'm going to be barking up that same tree in regards to this curriculum that the state wants to introduce and shove down our throats. Let's put it this way. I don't think it's cool. I don't think it's productive in any certain way, shape or form. Should be in regards to what's being taught in curriculum, should be our reading, math, social studies and science.
Please talk into the mic.
I'm sorry.
Okay, move the mic down so you don't have, there you go.
I believe the curriculum should be taught, should be our math, our science, our social studies and our reading. Anything else, that's up to the parent and the child. That's it. All these, the state is forcing the school systems to shoving it down the parents' throats and it's not fair. All these processes that are going on in state, they are going to listen and people will show up in droves at the state. It's up to the school boards and to deny it. There are other school systems that have denied it. And guess what? The state is not going to do anything because of the fact that so many people and so many school boards are rejecting it. So the more people that reject it, like us as parents, it, they will do nothing. They're not going to take away any funding. It is, they are just trying to shove it and we're saying, you know what? We're not going to say anything. We're just going to accept it and it's not going to be the case. So please, please do your due diligence and please let us parent our children as we are here to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michelle Schminlin, 804 Prospect Street. I agree with pretty much everything she said as far as parenting our own children. The other part I don't understand about the opt-in and opt-out. I believe you said it's supposed to be one session that this is happening in, is that? Because if you're opting in and out of portions, how are you going to remove a child for this portion and not remove them for that portion or bring them back in? That just doesn't make much sense to me. In addition, my daughter is one of the kids that are attending ESY. I wish Ms. Cleffey was here. They're doing a great job and I can't speak highly enough about Ms. Lopes with the Orton Gillingham training. It has been a huge difference in my daughter learning how to read. And we definitely need more people who are certified in that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public portion. At this time, if there's nothing else, just that our next meeting is August thirtieth at the middle school. I know it might say on here the high school, but they're going to be putting in some ducks in here. So it'll be at the middle school. It'll start at, well, I'm not sure when it's going to start, so I won't say that until it comes out. If I have a motion to adjourn, I say goodnight to everyone.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is accepted. Good night, everyone.